Call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 health emergency and in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business, this board meeting is being held via video conference and streamed live on YouTube on the district website at www.evenet.org. In addition, members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carr, I'm alone.
Here.
Mrs. Chu. Mrs. Chu. I see you there. You're muted. Mr. Sizmore.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Hung.
Here.
Mrs. Lacks.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston. I see you. You're frozen. And President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
Here.
I pledge allegiance.
Am I?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies. I'm going to ask those who are watching tonight, somebody is not muted. If everyone who is watching the meeting tonight could please mute themselves. Definitely hearing some noise in the background. If you are participating by Zoom tonight, please make sure you're on mute.
Mrs. Becker, everyone is muted. That may be coming from one of the board members.
Okay, board members. I don't know. Do what you can. East Brunswick Board of Education has closed notice of this meeting by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the education offices. Written notice is also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. Individual.
What did he say?
Individuals who speak at the board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Bernie, you, it's, you still feel that static feedback is coming from one of the board members?
Everyone is muted at this point. It, it may be just something with the system right now.
Okay. All right. We're going to start off this evening with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valeski?
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone, and happy Earth Day. I would like to start my remarks this evening with a recap of the public presentation we gave on Thursday, April 8th, that addressed our current and forecasted enrollment growth. Additionally, tonight, I would like to expand on our initial presentation to provide a more comprehensive context for our school community, and especially parents of our third, fourth, and fifth grade elementary students. Let me begin by restating the root cause of our enrollment challenges that prompted the recommendation for temporary classroom unit additions and grade restructuring scheduled for September 2022. Based on current enrollment, we have used all our elementary classroom capacity. Additionally, we do not have the current capacity to expand special education programming at our elementary schools. And this is after we have moved art and music out of their designated classrooms. School enrollment projections quantified by a demographic study update for these Brunswick public schools performed by statistical forecasting in June 2019 forecast an enrollment increase of 411 students. And this is for the, for the range from 2009, 2010 school year to the 2022, 2020, I'm sorry, the 2023, 2024 school year. I need to highlight that some important numbers are not currently published in any reports. And this is since September of 2022. This is September beginning this school year. We have registered 331 new students. 64 previously inactive students have re-entered our schools. Now, those are students that are likely have gone to private schools and re-entered East Brunswick. We have also preregistered 110 students for kindergarten. 27 students are preregistered for ELA. And 50 total registrations are in some form of process for either kindergarten or ELA. As we begin our recovery from a global pandemic, the problem is bigger than a simple, we are out of space, let's just make more of it. Consequently, the solutions to the multifaceted problems we are currently facing become more complex, too. In fact, many of you are not aware that the Board of Education has been discussing facility capacities along with our AG high school and grade level reconfiguration options since May of 2017. We know from research that clustering certain grades around developmentally appropriate levels can contribute to more successful outcomes later in a student's academic career. We are also acutely conscious of the social and emotional impacts this pandemic has had on our students and their families. In all candor, we did not know the full scope of the pandemic's impact on our students' social and emotional health, nor do we have a full assessment of the academic impacts resulting from the pandemic. But here is what we do know. We know we will need smaller class sizes, especially in our elementary classrooms, as we take additional academic as well as social and emotional supports to the classrooms. Our classroom reconfiguration proposal is not in spite of the pandemic. In fact, it is in direct response to the pandemic. Additionally, we also plan to offer summer enrichment to remediate learning losses resulting from the pandemic. Now, as community members are well aware, our current school transitions throughout a student's academic career are prompted by the facilities we currently have. The pressing high-level question is how do we create an organizational structure that does not increase the number of school transitions in a student's EB experience, yet builds cost-effective elementary capacity, ultimately supports the distinctive needs of both primary elementary and upper elementary students, and provides an opportunity to explore the adoption of a comprehensive 9 through 12 high school model? Our plan, Building Our Success, is a multi-year, multi-phased approach. It begins to address by September 2022 a forecasted shortage of elementary classroom capacity for both general and special education students. Grade restructuring for this initial phase, we call Phase One, is critical to providing appropriate educational spaces for all students and teachers as East Brunswick residential properties continue to be revitalized with families who are enrolling elementary-age children into our schools. We are witnessing exactly what the demographer study revealed. We are being impacted by the migration of students primarily in grades 1 through 3. Also high in our prioritization list is the creation of appropriate spaces to expand our special education programming. We want to have the capacity in our homeschool settings for our students to receive high-quality East Brunswick special education instruction and related services. By opening up classroom space in each elementary school, we create the opportunity for inclusion in the least restrictive environment in a child's homeschool along their same age peers. Inclusive education benefits both children with and without disabilities. And some benefits include increasing friendship skills, social, emotional well-being, access to peer models, heightened academic success, the opportunity for engagement in extracurricular activities, and a strengthened feel of belongingness. So, our overall commitment is to build sustainable classroom capacity, focus on equity throughout our school district, and contain costs to minimize the tax impact burden on township residents. So our solutions must address the following questions. How much space do we need for the immediate and future needs of the district? Where do we place that space and how do we organize it? How do any spatial solutions integrate into our existing facilities and grade level limitations? What is the most cost-effective mechanism to communicate with our entire stakeholder group, some of whom are on this meeting tonight? How do we envision our future teaching and learning environments? What other opportunities to improve our students' experiences present themselves as we develop solutions for classroom capacities? And finally, what security concerns need to be addressed in any new facility or any newly added additions to existing facilities? So to recap what our proposal was for our grade level reconfiguration for September 2022 with Phase One was to reconfigure elementary schools to pre-K through 4th grade. Hammershold would begin functioning as an upper elementary school. I want to reemphasize that. Hammershold, you know today, is a middle school. Hammershold would re, begin re-functioning as an upper elementary school serving grades 5 and 6. We are not trying to push students into a middle school model. We are trying to create an upper elementary experience for our students. Churchill, with the addition of temporary classroom units, also known as TCUs, would serve grades 7, 8, and 9. And of course, our high school would remain unchanged with its current configuration of grades 10, 11, and 12. Now, one of the questions that has been posed by some of the community members through emails to the board and both to me is why not add the temporary classroom units at the high school and just move the 9th grade to the high school in Phase One? Well, after a review with our district's architect, we determined it would be extremely difficult to place those temporary classroom units adjacent to the high school. We would incur significant costs to adjust the site topography, reroute traffic circulation roadways, replace sidewalks and parking spaces, meet water retention and wetlands requirements, or just to name a few. But we are working on a more detailed cost comparison that will demonstrate those additional costs for the public. This proposal in Phase One still incorporates four building transitions, just as we do now, but now at different grade levels. And I want to emphasize that no matter when we implement this grade level reconfiguration, we know it will affect certain grades, and they will have abbreviated stays specifically at Hammershold, but only during the transition period. So for every one of you who has reached out to express your passionate concerns about the impact this grade level reconfiguration proposal may have on your child or children you know, I humbly ask you to consider this. What if we were able to build a substantially better experience for your child through this process? And hopefully, the ideas I'm about to share for Phase Two, which we have previously not shared, presents a clearer picture of what we hope to accomplish and the incremental steps required to get there. So Phase Two includes, but is not limited to, first, developing plans to replace the temporary classroom units with a permanent structure. And we are required by the Department of Education to do that once temporary classrooms are placed on our site. And the second most important thing is to position the district to consider a new comprehensive 9 through 12 high school on the existing high school site that would support optimum 21st century teaching and learning for all our high school, all our high school students. And finally, we know the, the president and his administration have publicly discussed investing in infrastructure repairs and improvements. And should any federal assistance come through the states to support school renovation or replacement, I believe it's imperative that East Brunswick public schools be prepared in advance to either accept or decline such an opportunity. I want to thank everyone for listening to this lengthy presentation. All of this information is, is essential. However, I know there will be more questions. And our typical "for the good of the cause" format is not designed for a question-and-answer format. Therefore, I respectfully request that the board consider postponing action item number one under facilities until our next regularly scheduled board meeting on Thursday, May 6th. Additionally, I'm inviting all concerned stakeholders to join me on a Zoom Q&amp;A forum on Tuesday, May 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., where we can have a dialogue on your questions and provide answers to them. We will publish the Zoom link and login information next week on our website. Now, another district news. Beginning this past Monday, we welcome back our students at all schools for five-day-a-week in-person instruction for those families who selected the option. I really enjoyed seeing our students and lots of happy staff during my visits to school this week. Congratulations to Chittick kindergarten teacher Kim Ballack, who was recently notified. She is the recipient of the 2021 Cooperating Teacher Excellence Award from Rider, Rider University, which recognizes cooperating teachers who go above and beyond for student teachers. Kim mentored Ryder student Carrie Morano in, in the fall of 2020. And the district is proud and grateful to cooperating teachers like Kim who use their talents to create the next generation of educators. So congratulations, Kim. Also, congratulations to our girls varsity volleyball team on winning the state sectional championship this year. They played extremely hard for every point. And a state sectional championship is an important accomplishment, and we are so proud of this team for this amazing accomplishment. Go Bears! Just a reminder, third-quarter report cards can be viewed online through Parent Access tomorrow, Friday, April 23rd. Hard copies will be made available at the request of anyone without internet access. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Board members, Dr. Valeski has made a recommendation in his report tonight to table the item on the agenda under facilities to table that vote for reconfiguration of grades and of proving temporary classroom units to our next board meeting. So I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion or comments before I ask for a consensus on this. Anyone wish to speak?
Great idea.
Okay, please. Go ahead. Lori?
Oh, I just said, "great idea," sorry.
Oh, okay. Jeff, is that your hand? Jeff?
I believe Jeff is frozen.
Okay, let me tell him he's frozen. Okay. You're frozen.
Can you hear me on the phone line?
Yes, we can.
All right, let's, it's, I'm, I'm in an unstable internet environment, so this is me speaking. This is Jeff, if, if I'm still frozen. First of all, I, I, I do want to mention a few things. I did, I did hear from very many members of the community on this. And I, I appreciate Dr. Valeski's suggestion. In the mere fact, if the, for the first fact, let's know the community that you are heard. And, and some of the key points that were made repeatedly in the communication I've gotten from the community, I've really given it a lot of thought. I know there was a lot of commentary surrounding students with IEP or special needs. Are we going to be equipped to handle all of that? And, and I, I, as a parent of an IEP student, I, I respect that, and, and that was a question that I had. And in speaking to Dr. Valeski about this, if this adds any comfort to the community in this, I, I started to give it some serious thought. The 5th graders that are going to be impacted, if, should this get approved, will actually be, if I'm doing the math right, and Dr. Valeski, correct me, the first graduating class that will experience either two or three years, based on the timeframe that you've told us for a build, in what will be ultimately a 21st century high school that's replacing a 1957 high school, long before the word internet, Wi-Fi, tech, or any of those things were invented. I think, I, my, my perception of this is that what this proposal ultimately will do, and I could be mistaken, but I don't think I am, is going to provide the best opportunity for education for all students across the board. And I think ultimately, having a new high school, and now talking about Phase Two, I'm hoping that the public sees where this absolutely makes sense and represents the town and educational level and the expectations that have been set here. So, so with that, I, I support this being tabled. I'm looking forward to hearing from the public. And if what we hear coming back is anything based on the communication that's been provided to me in many emails, phone calls, texts, and even on Facebook, I think I have to say, and I've thought about this, I think we're very much on the right track. But I appreciate the pump of the brakes, because I do think the public needs to be heard. So I appreciate your decision on that, and I will support a delay in today's vote. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Valeski, I, I also think that scheduling the community forum is a great idea. Could you just repeat again the date and time of the community forum?
Sure. And I wanted to emphasize, too, that there was never a, an attempt not to have community forums. I was hoping that we would have the opportunity to have face-to-face forums. And given our current limitations on doing that, really, there is no other choice than to have a Zoom-type forum. Let me see. We've got a lot of papers here. Excuse me one second. Zoom will be a Q&amp;A on Tuesday, May 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., open to all interested stakeholders. And we will publish the Zoom link and login information on our website next week. And I'll also remind people in my normal communications during the week. So we'll, we'll keep everybody updated.
Yeah, thank you. As, as I often remind the public, the board basically stays silent during the Good of the Cause for the public, because it's, it's the public's time to address us. But it's not a forum for questions and answers, or for discussion, or a dialogue. This is just the time for the public to come and speak to us. And if anything needs to be addressed, it's done following the meeting with one of the relevant administrators. This is a, a great way to actually have a dialogue with the superintendent and his team about our plan, so I, I, I also applaud this. Anybody else? Barbara?
Thank you. And, and I also think this is a great idea. And Dr. Valeski, isn't there an email that they want to send their questions ahead of time to give a heads up on what the areas they're interested, the parents, to talk about? They can reach out to, to administration?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reese. The, if you go onto the homepage of our website, you will find right there, there's the, what we call the first tile, the top-left tile, is entitled "Building Our Success." There's FAQs in there. And you can go in there, and the email address is listed in there. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna look it up. I don't recall the, I want to make sure I get it exactly right. But I will, I will interrupt President Becker. Let me, let me look for it, and I will, I'll get it for you.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I will ask the secretary to call the roll. Mark, Mark II?
Jeff says it the best eloquently, and since I, you know, graduated in '82 from our high school, I think it's a great idea that we're going to be upgraded. I can't imagine what the children are going through with an outdated high school. And I appreciate you, Dr. Valeski, burning everybody for this forward thinking for our, you know, parents and students. So I'm, I'm all for this plan.
Okay, so just again, just to make sure every board understands we're voting to table the vote tonight, to postpone the vote tonight, and to schedule a community forum. Heather, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, I just wanted to comment. I very much appreciate Dr. Valeski and the administrative team offering to table this. I think in reading the letters from the community, it wasn't just, sometimes you get emails that are just a strong opinion, but these were some very thoughtfully crafted letters and concerns. And if people put that kind of time into it, I'm letters and concerns, and if people put that kind of time into it, I'm so glad that we're going to have the opportunity to discuss these things, answer Dr. Valeski can answer questions. Um, and I know that we are because of the growing population on a time crunch, but I just think that this idea of slowing down to give the community time to answer some questions and to get a little more information is just such a solid plan of action. So thank you for doing that.
President President Becker, just before you take a motion or anything, it doesn't require a a role call. You can just do a special.
No, I'm going to do. I'm going to ask for a roll call because we're on Zoom, and um I had I had talked to Matt about this, and he had suggested just doing a roll call, so we will be voting yes or no on whether or not to support Dr. Valeski's recommendation to table um, i.e. put off voting tonight and voting instead on the sixth for the grade reconfiguration and rental of the T C U's and to scheduling the community forum on May fourth.
Okay, then a motion needs to be made to do that?
Yes, yes, I'm I'm I swear I'm getting there, Joe, but thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure. Dr. Valeski, you have your hand up.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure I got to the community about the email for the questions for the F A Qs. It is questions with an S, questions at e B net dot org. And if you put those up, we will answer those questions and add them to the F A Qs, and you can see we already have started that. Uh, so if you cannot make the uh Q and A forum on May fourth, please be sure to do that so we can get those those questions and answers posted.
Okay, so can I please have a motion to support Dr. Valeski's recommendation to tabling the item on the facilities agenda that would be a vote on the grade reconfiguration, the rental of the T C U's, and to be scheduling a Zoom question and answer forum with Dr. Valeski and his team on Tuesday, May fourth from seven to nine P M. May I please have a motion?
I move.
Second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Carlo Angelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Call me whatever you like. It's okay. Thank you. Martian Carries, that item will be tabled. We will be removing it from the agenda tonight and voting at the next board meeting. Next on our agenda, let me just go back on my iPad. Okay, we have two presentations tonight. Dr. Valeski, would you like to present our new supervisor of athletics?
Yes, President Becker and the entire board. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Frank Malta, who's our newest supervisor of athletics, and Frank comes to us with a um very um diverse background, and and so we look forward to what he's going to offer to East Brunswick and our East Brunswick athletes, and I had the pleasure of uh attending the uh signing ceremony, the first signing ceremony that that Mr. Malta had overseen. And I I just have to tell um the board and Mr. Malta that how impressed I was with just the quality of the recognition of all of our student athletes who are going on to uh compete at their colleges and universities. So with that, um, Mr. Frank Malta.
Thank you.
If we need to be back on gallery view, please? Thank you.
Uh, thank you for having me tonight and giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. Uh, I've been in education for the last uh twenty four years. Uh, I've had quite a variety. I've taught quite a variety of uh of grade levels at the middle school and high school level, had the opportunity to coach at those levels as well, teaching coach at those levels, uh both male and female sports. Um, and for the last fifteen years, I was at Jackson Memorial. I concentrated more so with baseball during that time. Uh, I did a lot of our strength and conditioning there, and I also had the opportunity to teach adaptive physical education there, which uh for the last eight years there was a was a wonderful experience and was one of my toughest goodbyes when I left Jackson. Um, it was such a I had such a a great rapport with our with our students. Um, I'm looking forward to this position because I'm looking forward to the opportunity to to work with our coaches and student athletes. Uh, I think it's something that um, you know, just concentrating really on baseball at Jackson. Uh, this gives me a a wider range of 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 kids and athletes to just be around and make a difference with, and I look so forward to that. Um, I want to continue the sense of pride, hard work, and the traditions, you know, of our coaches and student athletes here, so uh that's something that uh I'm looking forward to in this position. Um, a few things, just the, you know, my first sight of our athletic programs here. Um, you know, the first thing that that struck me with our coach was our coaches, you know, I I made it a a point to get out to games and practices even before I was able to start. I was able to come up to some games at night um and and just see what we were all about here in East Brunswick, and I am so impressed with the teaching, and you you know, the one thing I look for, you know, in other in other coaches is I look to the student athletes, and I look to see how they perform in practice uh in in games, uh their body language. Uh, you know, just the little intricacies of what they're doing uh in the course of of a game and and see how they're being taught, and I think, you know, our coaches have done a fantastic job. I am really impressed with them. Uh, and I am looking forward to the spring coaches. I'm looking forward to see to see that part of it, too. I got a great great chance to see season three, our season three um athletes perform, and now we're into the season four. Um, so uh we're starting our regular contests uh this this week. Uh, we open up our regular season. Uh, season three, a couple of highlights, you know, our 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 girls volleyball team uh did win a sectional championship as Dr. Valeski talked about earlier. Our gymnastics team as well uh was a top team in the G M C and was a top five team in the state as well. Uh, and both of those teams have a lot of our young ladies coming back, so uh there's a bright future for them, and we're I think looking forward to seeing them next year uh as well. Um, so and the last thing here is that um I think we're going to, we're going to continue to do what's best for our student athletes and protecting them and keeping them healthy. Uh, we're following COVID protocols. Our coaches are and our athletes are doing an outstanding job of that. Um, and it is our utmost concern right now. I I think, you know, into season three and and getting into the spring of season four, you know, our job right now is to keep our athletes and our coaches healthy and to keep them on the on the fields and courts and allowing them to play. Uh, and you know, something that we put together in district uh was a video. It was a video put together by uh John McMenamin and Danielle Blalock. It's a wonderful informative video. Um, and I think we're going to show it now. Um, it is it is a three and a half minutes and just filled with a lot of information for our athletes and our community.
Um, that was a very fast three and a half minutes. Perhaps um Joe, Bernie, who's sharing the screen? There we go. Technology is wonderful until it isn't. Um, we could certainly invite you back. Uh, uh, this is uh it'll be spring for a while, and we could have you at the next board meeting or the one after that to present the video, Frank.
That's fine. Uh, you know, one thing I should say is that our coaches um in our district, we've put it, you know, on a lot of our team websites. A lot of our players have had the opportunity to view it already. Uh, we're trying to um get it out to our student athletes and to our our parents. Um, so I mean, it is a it is a great video. Uh, it is on YouTube that it can be. It can be viewed on there as well. Um, and I can just finish my last two slides. Um, so um moving into the summer, you know, we're looking forward to uh getting our athletes uh and bands uh back on campus with their workouts at night, with their practices, preparing for the twenty one, twenty two school year. You know, one thing I think that is that is just uh an awesome an awesome start to the to the next school year is the end of the summer, hearing the band playing at night, practicing uh preparing, you know, our student athletes are on campus, you know, and they are able to work out and prepare. Um, and you can see we put our official start date, our official start date for uh heat acclimation for football is eight, nine. Uh, the rest of our teams begin on uh eight sixteen. Um, so uh we're we're we we want to get back into a regular, normal uh athletic year. I think that's the biggest thing that we're looking forward to. I know our coaches and athletes are as well. Uh, and you know, we're again good here to all of the COVID protocols that are going to be adjusted, uh and we will follow suit, and we will do everything that we can, you know, to keep our athletes out there. You can go on to the next one, and just that, you know, uh I kind of alluded to it earlier, but you know, we want that normal fall athletic season. There's nothing like watching our teams in the fall. Uh, it's a great time of year. It's probably the best weather of the year uh and get a lot of people out, and one thing I have to say, we we got a little taste of that a couple days ago. You know, our our campus was jumping. We had a lot of home events going on. It was kind of great to see that. It was awesome to see all the people out. Uh, awesome to see our athletes playing and participating. It was fantastic, and it felt like it felt like normal, and I think that's, you know, what we're all looking forward to. Uh, one last thing I'd like to end with, um, you know, our our upward, our upper uh admin team from our upper admin, you know, they've been wonderful with me um and just uh helping me out. Our our uh high school team and our Churchill team also, they're awesome, excellent educators involved there, and I am so happy to be able to work with all these people day in and day out. It's it's been a great experience for me in my first three or four weeks here, and I really look forward to being here and you know, seeing more of our athletics and more of what our school has to offer our our student athletes. Thank you very much for this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you so much for coming and talking and giving everybody, not just the board, but everybody who's watching a chance to get to know you. You have a lot of um current and former sport parents on this board. We all, but we all have a passion for athletics, and like everyone else in our community, we have a passion for our children.
That's a great word. Passion is an awesome word to use.
Uh, it's it's a great word to use with athletics because it also involves sportsmanship, which we're we're so proud of in this district. I also would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to thank someone. Um, in September, we were presented with a very unique situation. We needed an interim athletic director. Um, we didn't really have time to train anyone, so it had to be someone who could hit the ground running and, oh yeah, during a pandemic. Uh, with lots of restrictions and upsets to the usual rules, regulations, and seasons. And just like in the comics, there was one man who came to mind. Um, and that was um Knop.
Or Frank Knoppenberger, as people know it.
Yes, I was Mr. Frank Knoppenberger. Uh, our former uh athletic director and supervisor of health and phys ed for the district agreed to come out of retirement and be our interim director, and you checked off all the boxes, Frank, and then some. Once again, thanks for believing green. Thanks for being there. You did an awesome job, and I I'm sure that you're going to continue to work with Frank to help make his transition even easier and smoother. And we thank you. Dr. Valeski, did you want to add anything?
No, I I want to concur with you, President Becker, and on, you know, behalf of all the administrators, e- extend just extreme appreciation to uh Mr. Knoppenberger for coming out of retirement, coming back to East Brunswick. He did it like like you mentioned, at a critical time with COVID protocols. Uh, and you know, Frank just brings such a wealth of knowledge with N J S I A A rules, regulations, and and the protocols that were being put in place. Uh, he did a phenomenal job, and we were able to pull off seasons for the athletes, and I mentioned that to the athletes at signing day that you know, we were we were a school district that had a season. We had all of our seasons, and we had some we had some things we had to resolve. We had some quarantines we had to do, but they weren't significant, and we were able to deal with them, and I I really want to express my appreciation to our athletes, too, who took it upon themselves to treat themselves and their fellow athletes with such care, and I think that contributed to our success, so. And I I look forward to Mr. Malta and his leadership, and like I said, it was evident at the signing day ceremony the other day, so I look forward to many, many great years with Mr. Malta.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and just to uh piggyback on that, you know, uh Frank Knoppenberger's been a a wealth of knowledge for me, and he's been a great person to, you know, throw things off of and talk to about this position. Who who better than him? And uh, you know, he and Christian Azza have been a great help to me in these early few weeks of just getting acclimated to the position because I think they they both did such a fantastic job, and uh they're going to be a tough act to follow. But I'm going to do my best. That's part of the challenge, so I want to thank them.
I I have to give a shout out to Christian Azza, too, because Christian Azza did double duty. He assumed a new position at the high school as an assistant principal, but he still had his feet in uh a couple of camps at the same time, and he demonstrated the excellence that we've come to expect in East Brunswick, so thanks to him, too, and the phenomenal job that he did during his tenure as the supervisor of athletics.
Yeah, Chris, sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out. Forgive me. Um, you did do the double duty, and you continue to contribute so much to our district and to our kids, so we're just lucky to have you in any capacity. And I believe we now have a second presentation. Dr. Valeski?
Yes, President Becker, we have an update for the board and community on diversity and equity initiative that we kicked off uh with Effective School Solutions, and leading that for the district is Dr. Figaro, who is going, he was our assistant sup- uh superintendent for student services and who will um deliver the presentation.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to update you on the work that we've been doing with Effective School Solutions on further building a foundation of racial literacy and cultural inclusion. This fall, we contracted with Effective School Solutions, which I'll say E S S because it's a lot easier to say uh to help us with our efforts uh to further our work with racial literacy and cultural diversity. We realize the importance of having an outside organization come in to look at what we were doing in these important areas. Over the past five months, E S S has conducted eleven focus groups, uh surveyed stakeholders, gathered data uh that we can use to build a sustainable culture of improvement. Uh, in that time, E S S has also provided eighteen professional learning sessions for staff, administration across the district. So in phase one, in the summary, what we have done already, the needs assessment. We've created an action plan. And as I mentioned before, racial literacy and cultural sensitivity, professional development for administrators, teachers, and support staff. For the needs assessment, basically how we collected the data. School visits, we had six different schools that we that uh E S S visited, looked at climate and inclusivity. Focus groups, there were eleven various groups, each one about an hour session long. Districtwide climate survey, we had over three thousand six hundred responses to that survey, which is very good. Terms of the data collection, there's several components that were included such as uh student discipline, employee demography, and grade level required course materials. Questions related to curriculum, and this slide is consistent with the work uh we have planned to do. Elementary families said seventy four percent. Books in my school show different races. Hammer Shold sixty three percent believe that curriculum materials used are culturally inclusive and reflect diverse races and ethnicities. The high school in Churchill, sixty percent believe materials were culturally inclusive. Parents, fifty three percent believe that materials were culturally inclusive and diverse, and staff, fifty six percent. Staff believe the curriculum materials were inclusive and diverse. Next slide, please. So if we look at our culture of racial inclusivity, um we scored very well in the green areas and some of the top yellow areas, areas like families are part of events. part of events, students of all backgrounds, socialize and work together, school rules are applied fairly in most cases. Though these two on the bottom right, one clear rules against racial insensitivity was only 71.38%. And students in my class, schools respect each other's racial and ethnic differences, 68.83%. Okay, if we can look at the disciplinary history by subgroup, you can see that it's 2016 to 2017 through the 2019 to 2020 season data on suspensions. Black and Hispanic students have represented about 35 to 45% of the suspension days while representing about 12% of the student population. Okay, so let's take a look at the breakdown, racial breakdown of staff and students. Our Asian staff are only 6%, 33% of our students of Asian background. So there's a big disparity there. Hispanic staff, 5%, 7% students, black students at 3%, I'm sorry, black staff at 3% and students at 5%. So we've made some improvements, but we definitely need to continue to look at that in terms of staff diversity. Disproportionality and restorative justice. Restorative justice is something Dr. Vanel had previously started at the high school. Restorative justice focuses on identifying motivation, impact of action, alternative behaviors, with a focus on educating and building empathy. So it's more therapy versus punishment. Well, let's take a look at some emerging insights. Main, which is our main focus for us in terms of work we can do. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we have staff that genuinely care about all of our students. That was clear throughout the data. Staff diversity, we're working with ESS on possible recommendations to expand our staff search pool, to recruit more quality individuals of diverse backgrounds. Opportunities to make curriculum more culturally sensitive. I know Dr. Bowley and her team are looking at curriculum assessment updates that address multiple ethnic and racial viewpoints. And this, this work takes time. Also, opportunities to improve cultural racial inclusivity. We plan on working directly with ESS to improve respect for racial differences, more clear rules about being racially unkind to improve staff ability to address an acceptance and inclusivity of all students. Opportunities for holistic discipline approach. ESS can help us work on further focus of restorative justice. And finally, on this, this particular emerging insights, opportunities for more educator readiness to handle those racial conversations and incidents. ESS can help us better support staff and administration in adding to their toolkit in terms of how to manage these discussions effectively. So key recommendations, continue the professional learning, capacity building. Also, key recommendation of expanding staff diversity, create more culturally sensitive curriculum and assessment, continue restorative justice, prepare staff to better, be better equipped to handle culturally sensitive discussions and topics. And that's the, the plan for us at this point moving forward through next year. We also plan next year to eventually get parents and families more involved as we, we focus on the following year as well. I also want to thank Dr. Valeski and the Board of Education for all of your support in this work.
Thank you, Lou. Any comments, questions from board members? Thank you again, Lou. It's, it's always very exciting, but also so important to hear what we're doing to promote being inclusive, being tolerant, teaching our children about basic kindness and respect, not just for each other, but for themselves. I think that being in a continual state of improvement and looking to put forward new initiatives is absolutely the way to go. Investing in professional development is absolutely the way to go. I know our, our teachers are, I used this word before, but it's something I use in conjunction with this district all the time, passionate about promoting tolerance, justice, respect. So really, really very glad to see all this. Mark, why not, I believe you had your hand up?
Thank you. Yes, I, I think I'm going to take some time to look at that. That was the first time we got to look at the items on that survey. But being in the schools for five years, working there, being a former student, I'm very proud of our staff and the schools. And, you know, I wanted to thank them, thank Dr. Figaroa and everybody involved in this. So thank you to the staff.
Anyone else? Susanna?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you for, for this initiative and the work and, you know, and, and really taking, taking the time to, to have a objective, you know, third party view to come in and look at it, move forward. It's an important topic that's top of the news all the time. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, the children are our future. And, you know, I know that's a cliche, we overuse it, but they really are. And anything we can do to help move forward the culture of inclusion is, is definitely a great step forward. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the good of the cause for the public. Members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID and password you see before you on the screen. In order to be recognized, use the chat feature, select the Zoom meeting, host, then enter and send your name to the host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. Participants are limited to three minutes duration. And again, I want to reiterate what we said at the top of the meeting. This is the time for the public to come talk to the board. Please do not mistake us being quiet and attentive as anything other than that. We listen and hear everything you say. We do not view this as a forum for discussion, for question and answer. We view this as a time for you to be able to speak. Any questions, any follow-ups will be handled by Dr. Valeski and his team. So, Joe? Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board?
Actually, Bernie's controlling that.
Bernie?
There is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay. Seeing none, I close the public portion. Moving on, we have several resolutions of appreciation. Lori, would you please do a Ciana, reading the first one?
Resolution of appreciation, Administrative Professionals Day, Professionals Day. Whereas administrative professionals are partners in the education of our students, and whereas administrative professionals play a major role in creating an environment that is conducive to learning in our schools, and whereas administrative professionals provide valuable services to our students, faculty, staff, parents, and other members of the community, and whereas administrative professionals are essential to the efficient, effective operation of the schools, and whereas administrative professionals facilitate important communication between the schools, parents, and other members of the community, and whereas administrative professionals help to maintain the excellent reputation of the district, now therefore be resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims Wednesday, April 21st, 1st, 2021, as Administrative Professionals Day in the district, and expresses appreciation to our administrative professionals for their dedication and commitment to our students and our schools.
May I please have a motion for this resolution? Moved by Barbara?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Our next resolution, resolution of doctor, of appreciation, I'm going to ask Dr. Valeski to please read.
Thank you, President Becker. Resolution of appreciation, Faculty Staff Appreciation Week. Whereas all members of the faculty and staff contribute to the excellence of the school district, and whereas all members of the faculty and staff are partners in the education of our students, and whereas all members of the faculty and staff play an essential role in creating a welcoming and secure learning atmosphere in which all students are able to achieve at the fullest extent, and whereas the dedication and commitment of all members of the faculty and staff are directly related to the outstanding accomplishments of our students, and whereas there is no greater legacy than the sound education of our, that our students receive, now therefore be resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims May 3rd through May 7th, 2021, as Faculty Staff Appreciation Week, and commends all members of the faculty and support staff for the time and effort they devote to our students.
So moved.
Moved by Heather. Second by Barbara. Is there any discussion?
I think Lori.
That was Lori.
Me.
Lori, I'm sorry. And did you wish to say something?
Yes, you know, I just wanted to say, this is when I get to put my parent hat on. This is one of my favorite weeks of the year because our staff is so wonderful. And having been a student in the district and a parent in the district and a board member in the district, this is the best week for me because no matter what school I'm in, I get to have all the other parents and the students come together and really show their appreciation. And especially when you look at what we've been through with the pandemic and it's affected families in so many different ways, the one thing that has never changed is that when you say to the parents in this district, please come out and show your appreciation for your staff and your kids' teachers, they all are there and generous and willing to give and so unbelievably thankful. And it's just a beautiful thing to see. So this is, this is, they're all wonderful resolutions, and I appreciate our nurses, I appreciate our administrative assistants, but I just have to say, not to play favorites, because I appreciate everyone, but as I said, this is something really, I think, brings the district together and the parents, and it's just a great week. So, and I have fun planning it, so.
Lori, I think you brought up a really good point. I remember when I was PTA president, always having trouble getting parents, enough parent volunteers to fully staff any given event we were going to do, except for the staff appreciation. In our case, I, it was breakfast. They, they couldn't get to me fast enough, offering to volunteer. So says a lot about the people, the parents in our district, but also the faculty and staff.
Oh, they want to do it. And I'll tell you, it's funny, when I first took over years ago, it was a day. And I started in the different schools I was in, making it a week long, and we did something different. And parents do, and, and not to embarrass Barbara, but I was talking to Barbara about Hammershold and what I was doing this week and how excited I was even with the COVID, you know, restrictions. And Barbara turns around and says, hey, well, I gave to, to Central, that's to Churchill. She said, I'd love to donate. I love the staff at Hammershold. So, you know, that's the thing, parents are so unbelievable. And Barbara's such a generous person, I didn't mean to embarrass you, but her kids are long past Hammershold. So it was just a nice thing to see, but I think that's what our staff does inspires the generosity and the real true appreciation from our parents. Thanks, Barb.
Was there another hand up, Heather?
I just wanted to express my greatest appreciation to the staff and to the teachers. This year has been unlike any other. And I do think that perception of what happens inside, well, inside the classroom, wherever the classroom may be, but perception of what happens inside the classroom this year has swung so many times. You know, you see people, teachers and staff are our heroes. And then it's, you know, strong feelings in other directions about what should happen in that frustration with the pandemic. And I think despite swings and frustrations and huge wins, that the teachers and the staff have just always provided such an excellent level of education and support for the kids. I think it hasn't mattered where the classroom was, if it's, you know, on, on teams, or if it's in the classroom, or on the field, the support for the students has been consistently above and beyond what anyone could hope for. And I know the teachers have worked more hours this year than any other year in their career. The paraprofessionals, everyone is just seems to be working round the clock. And I am deeply appreciative for what they're doing for the health of the community, as well as the education of the kids. Thank you.
Was there anyone else? Mark Sizmar?
Yeah, mo- most of it was said by the others, so I won't repeat that. Thank you very much. And, you know, just note, from September, the staff came back into the schools. It's important to get the kids in the schools. And the hybrid training is, is very difficult on the staff. I've heard from many staff members, and they, they answered the call, they came in the buildings, and they did the job. And very proud of them. And this, this has to be the toughest year on record for a teacher by far, for what they've done in the classrooms. And they continue to do. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Anyone else? And we have one more resolution that I believe Lori is going to read about National School Nurse Day.
Before you do that, you just didn't say all in favor.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thanks, Joe. Lori?
Well, I will read this resolution, but I have to correct myself. I realized something. What makes the second resolution so important is that it encompasses all three. So I just realized I don't have to apologize to the nurses or the administrative professionals, because the beauty of staff appreciation is, it's everybody. Right?
There you go.
Even Dr. Valeski?
Even Dr. Valeski, especially Dr. Valeski. So with that being said, whereas East Brunswick Public Schools team of nurses positively impact the health and safety of the students and staff, and whereas our school nurses play an essential role in creating a welcoming and secure learning atmosphere in which our stu-, all students are able to achieve to the fullest extent, and whereas the dedication and commitment of all East Brunswick school nurses played a vital role during the COVID-19 pandemic, having been instrumental in keeping students and staff safe, now therefore be resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims May 12th, 2021, as National School Nurses Day, and commends all East Brunswick school nurses for their extraordinary time and effort they devote to our students and staff.
Can I please have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu?
Second.
Second, Jeff.
Second by Jeff. Any discussion? Li Wu?
So I concur, all my fellow board members said, I want to give my special appreciation to our school nurses. Our society is changing so fast. Our student is changing on daily basis. Our school nurses are facing challenges dynamically changing every day. So they have to deal with our students' health confidential, and they care about them on the daily basis. I really appreciate. Thank you.
Dr. Valeski, and then Barbara?
President Becker, I just simply want to say very quickly, the administrative professionals, the faculty, staff, the nurses, my success wouldn't be possible without them. That, that I just simply, a representation of the district. These are the people that come to work every day, do the work. And the resolutions have lots of nice words in them, but I've got to tell you, the actions are so powerful. And that's what I saw when we returned to school on Monday, and we saw just happy staff welcoming students back, our nurses walking around, making sure students were safe. And, you know, and every single day I'm supported by two ladies in my office who, you begin to understand what the relationship is when they can tell you, this is what I think you would say, because they could already anticipate how you're going to behave. So I appreciate everyone so much. So thank you.
Barbara, I believe you had your hand up?
I, I just wanted to echo what we have said, but thank you to everyone from our teachers, our nurses, and administrative professionals, and everyone involved with the schools, and especially the nurses, you know, they really have, they've been put in a position with, with the pandemic that they, I'm sure none of them have ever they've been put in a position with, with the pandemic that they, I'm sure none of them have ever imagined. And really, we thank you all for, for all your dedication.
Very well said. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to our board agenda. Can I please? Yes, Susanna, you wanted to say something?
No, I don't. We have to say aye to this last one.
Oh, boy, I'm sorry, folks. My problem is I'm looking at my iPad for one thing, my laptop for another and the phone for another. So I keep forgetting where I am in the agenda. Thank you for everyone for keeping me on track. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried. Giving you a real challenge tonight, Joe.
It's okay.
Okay, now for our Board of Education items. Can I please have a motion to combine items one through six? So moved by Lori, second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? Mark? Mark, one?
Yes, on item number four, the policies, policy 0152, Board Officers. I want to hear from the curriculum, the Policy Committee. I made a suggestion and it was tabled a few meetings ago because it doesn't include any opportunity for candidates to make a statement or for candidates to take direct questions from board members in a public meeting. And I guess my question is, for all, for all four people that were at the policy meeting, why is that not part of the policy for our election process?
Susanna, Policy Chair?
Yeah, so, so it was brought to the Policy Committee, it was discussed. There was not a consensus to make an additional change to it. So we moved it forward. You know, in the version that you see it. We also took into account some information we, we received from, from Matt. I don't know, Matt, if you want to jump in and, and you know, discuss, you know, the feedback from what other districts are doing.
So what I did for the, for the board is I went and did a search of the various districts we represent as well as other districts. I didn't see that in any policy. I looked at the model policies for school boards and Strauss Esme. I spoke to school boards and well, it's not illegal to put that in there. It's unusual. And I would say that it's not, I haven't seen that in any other policy in the state. One might exist. School boards did say it's not illegal to have that, but it is quite uncommon. I also spoke to Strauss Esme, the person I know there, and they said that they've never seen that done either. So I gave, I provided that information to the Policy Committee when they asked me for that.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Gia Kobe regarding that, please?
Jeff? Oh, Jeff, you're so frozen. Okay, yes.
No, my voice is here. Mr. Kobe, in, in your research and going back through that, is it also not typical that more than one candidate is trying to secure that position, therefore leaving really no necessary reason to have any type of presentation made to the efficacy of that particular candidate?
Mr. Winston, I didn't, I wouldn't be able to discern that from looking at a board policy. I can tell you in my travels around the state, I've been at many boards where there's contested. I wouldn't call it elections, but contested appointment for the position of board president. And typically what happens is, as you know, there's no second required. There's a, just a nomination. And very often the person or the individual who makes the nomination for a particular candidate says why he or she is nominating that person to be the president and serving on the board, similar to what you guys did earlier this year. When there's not a contested election, clearly you're right, you wouldn't need to have any type of, of statement. But even, you know, I'm not able to discern whether or not, you know, a given board has its policy because they've had contested elections or not. What I can just tell you is, is that I did not see anything in there where there were statements made or, you know, minor speeches made by people running for the board. One of the board positions. That's not to say that somebody nominating somebody, just as you guys did this earlier this year, can make a statement on behalf of, of the person that you're nominating. And that is, that is typical.
So, so.
Okay, Jeff, can't tell, can't see you.
That's okay. I, I understand. That's why I was trying to get in quickly. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the hesitancy of including this is simply based on the reason that I've checked with, we've checked with other districts and they've simply are not doing it. Is that, is that our position?
Are you, are you asking me, Mr. Winston?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't make, I don't make the call, I don't make the calls on what the board wants to do with, with its policies. I just provide legal guidance. As I said, including that is not illegal. I'm sorry, I have feedback. Including that is not illegal. I just did a search of other policies around the state that I could come across on just going on websites and going to school boards, et cetera. And I didn't see any policy that had that type of language in it. Again, it's not illegal to have it. But I was just, I was just providing, I was asked to provide, what do other districts do? That's the information I provided.
Susanna?
Yeah.
And then Mark?
Yeah, I was just going to add to address the question, the policy. Committee members who, who were in attendance, discussed it, took, took that into consideration. Certainly that wasn't the only consideration. And determined that the policy would be better served as it was and, and, you know, and that's, you know, that's where we ended up.
Mark?
Yeah, I have two things to say on that. One, there will be a candidate's statement because the way we do it now, when someone nominates someone, they do make a statement. What's simply going to occur is the candidate will nominate themselves and will make a statement whether or not our policy has it in there because that's past practice. The other part of this is if a candidate for president or vice president on this board is reluctant to take questions from other board members in a public setting, that gives me concern. We should be more open with these things. We should do it in front of the public. We serve the public. So to not have a candidate's statement, to not take questions from board members and someone wants to be a president or vice president of this board, that gives me great concern. That's why I brought it up. That's why I suggested it. I think we need to be more open with the public.
Vicki, when it's my turn, Jeff, let me make you.
Okay, let me just see, is there anybody, did I miss somebody's hand? Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
To miss two. I understand that was the position of the Policy Committee and I'm happy to hear that it was debated. Can you please provide, give me a little bit more color on this. What is the hesitancy of doing this? What was the pushback to feel that it did not need to be included during that policy meeting? What was the objection?
Certainly, taking into consideration that, you know, a policy is something that we want to make sure is something that lives on. It's, you know, consistency across the state. That was one consideration. It wasn't the only one. Board members run, right? You're, you're not just placed into a position. So everyone knows what the board member stands for. So it just didn't seem necessary to add that, you know, that, that step and add something that nobody else has done. So, you know, I'll, I'll leave it at that. There were other board members if anybody wants to comment, but that, you know, that was the view of the Policy Committee.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just on that, and I appreciate the answer. So really, I was, I was, I was closer to right. I guess I addressed the question to the wrong person when I asked Mr. Gia Kobe, but your first, your first response was that's not the way anybody else is doing it in the state. In spite of the issues that we've had, hold on, hold on. In spite of the issues that we've had on this board in the most recent election, the, the first thing you stated was that's not the way anybody else is doing it in the state. Is that, is that really the reason why?
So if you're done, that was a consideration. As I said, the members in attendance who took the time to, you know, be members of the committee, thank you very much, discussed it and did not feel it was necessary to make the change. It was a consensus view.
I was at the meeting that night and from what I recall from the meeting, there was a sentiment that by the time a person's name is put forward into nomination, that there wasn't a need for a Q and A session. That the person nominating them could do a job stating their position or as Mark just said, someone can nominate themselves. He's absolutely correct. And make a statement. But we didn't feel that we wanted to turn this into a forum for a debate, if you will. And that there was an opportunity, I see your hand, Mark, and that there was an opportunity for the person nominating to make points about why the person they were nominating would be a good leader. And/or, as you did say, Mark, and it was an excellent point. One can nominate themselves and make a statement, absolutely. And we did not feel it was a matter of not wanting to be transparent and not wanting to face the public. And that somebody running for the board is looking to dodge, look, somebody interested in being a board leader was looking to dodge question and answers from their fellow board members. I, I do feel that we, we did want to know, how is this being handled by other boards? What is considered good practice, best practice? And so we were very interested in mass conclusion that he was not aware of any other board that had this as a part of their policy. So it was an aspect of it. Mark, now you had your hand up again?
Me?
Mr. Corangelo can go first.
Okay.
Mark, Jeff?
Thank you, guys. So my position being that I came in during my first meeting to vote for a president, I would have appreciated knowing kind of beforehand who was running. And then when we got to the meeting, you know, what, you know, person A running put their name in a hat and then they made a little statement and maybe I could ask a question. And I'm glad I voted for who I did, you know, but, you know, because I think Vicki does a fantastic job. So I'm happy, you know. And then, you know, person B. So judging from me coming in, I would have been more, I don't know, inclined to go with what Jeff and Mark are saying, not because of any other reason, but the timing. I was a new board member. My first meeting was, you know, boom, vote for president. I was like, oh my God, what do I do, you know? But now I see I made the right choice, though just because other boards do it, doesn't mean that this type of situation where someone comes in first day, boom, the first thing they got to do is vote for president was a little scary. You know, because I don't know if I should make the right choice, wrong choice. So having A, a statement and maybe B, asking multiple people questions would have helped guide me to my answer. So on this, an individual case, that probably happens maybe once every 10 years, who knows? But that is a reason to have a statement and maybe ask some questions.
No, actually, Mark, any new board member, their first meeting would be that meeting in January now. Since we changed around elections from April to November, the board reorganizes in January, which is the first meeting for any new board member. So any new board member would absolutely be in that same situation.
Since, then I think it's appropriate to allow the new board member an opportunity to, you know, hear what the candidate is saying. That way they can make a, you know, a good estimate of why they would want to, you know, vote for that person for president. Because it's super important. I mean, you do a great job. So, you know, I just wanted to throw my experience because I was a new board member. I think that's what maybe Mark is, Jeff tried to say is maybe new board members need a little more, you know, listening to candidates. That's all.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that viewpoint. Heather?
Oh, I just wanted to say, having been in the same situation, Mark, you know, earlier, but the same situation. I felt that that came across in the nomination speeches, the people that were nominating, the people that were running had a great deal to say about the board career and the achievements of the people they were nominating and their perspective on what they had to offer, which I thought was a solid way to do it. If only because I think people are less likely to speak to their own strengths as much as somebody who cares to take the time to think it through and nominate them. So I felt that I was given that information, in fact, more than I had even expected in the nomination speeches. They were there. And I felt confident with what I was doing, although at that point in time, it was a different election. But, but there was a lot of information provided, just in a different way.
Heather, thank you. I understand and I appreciate that and helping me through, but and asking a question of a potential president would be appropriate as well. And I know that, you know, someone nominating would say some, you know, beautiful stuff and it's warranted, but asking a question from another board member might still be appropriate.
Is there any other discussion? Mark?
Yeah, you know, again, I agree with Mr. Corangelo. On any given year, you could have three new board members coming in on the election process. That's just the way it rolls. So you'd have three new members coming in relying on one statement made by another person. It's kind of thin. And I, I do like to ask people questions in public. And that's not taking a shot at anybody or anything, but listen, when, when you're in a public meeting, we, we have the Open Public Meetings Act. And if somebody wants to be a leader on this board as the president or vice president, I think they should answer questions from board members only. I know if you opened it up, you know, it would be impossible to control with, you know, hundreds of people possibly. But when we go to get elected, the East Brunswick Education Association gives us a forum. There's questions and answers. We hear people in real time answer questions. You want to be the leader on this board. You want to be the leader on any, any type of board. I think that type of person that wants to be that leader should have to answer questions in a public setting. That's my opinion. And I don't see why it would be a bad thing. I've heard nothing to the contrary, that it would be a bad thing to add that to our policy.
Mark, did you want to separate this, out this policy and have a separate vote taken on it? Or do you, do you want me to move on with calling for a motion for all the policies?
Can we separate, yeah, can we separate out 152? Can I make a motion to separate out the vote for 152?
There is a motion on the table to separate 152. Is there a second?
I'm second.
So moved, Jeff.
Mark Corangelo's second. Okay.
About these, I have a question about another.
One, one second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, motion carries. So first, I want to go back to the original motion, which is for all items on the Board of Ed Agenda, one through six, with the exception of policy number 0152 under item number four. Can I please have a motion? Moved by Lori? Second by?
Second.
Second by Susanna. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question on one particular policy.
I have a question about another policy.
Okay, Mark Corangelo had actually raised his hand first.
Okay, so, thank you. So 2624 is the program grading system and I see that it says revised. A plus is a 98 to 100. B plus is 86 to 89. And maybe Heather could answer this better because she's a teaching school. And then C plus is 76, 79. Can someone explain to me why a B plus is 86? Because I would assume that an A plus would be 100, like I thought a plus would be 100. My suggestion would be to make A plus 99 to 100 and a B plus, you know, 88 to 89. Those numbers, you know, an 86 isn't a plus. It's kind of. Those numbers, you know, an 86 isn't a plus. It's kind of in the middle. So maybe someone can explain to me why these numbers are they are.
Um Dr. Beliski, Joyce, uh Dr. Bol.
I'd like Dr. Bolli to respond.
Right, so um the only proposed revision to this policy is um at the beginning, the red line there. Moving the letter grades from the fourth and fifth grade standard space report card. Um the rest of the policy has been unchanged. Um this policy, you know, has been longstanding in the district. And you know, the this grading system is what has been in place.
Okay, so my question is, why is, what is the justification for a B plus at 86? And a C plus at 76? I would think that a 70, you know, 77, 78, I mean, not like a little higher. Would you get them at plus? Am I making sense or am I off base?
No, you're making sense.
The 98, you know, because think about it, A plus is 98 to 100. And then B plus is 86, so that's two points that are different. 86, 87, 88. My suggestion, my thought, I don't, you know, I'm not saying I need to change policy or whatever, but. With reading through, I would think that an 88 or 89 is more of a plus. To me personally, I would say an 89 is plus. 88 isn't a plus. 88 is a B, so you know.
I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Corangelo. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay.
I jumped in too fast. President Becker?
Yes.
Um may I recommend that that I have Dr. Bully's team research uh Mr. Corangelo's questions? Uh and we return to another board meeting with some answers to the direct questions he's asked, he's asking.
So you want to also um take this policy um out of the motion, Victor?
Dr. Bully, do you concur?
Uh we can certainly look at at what Mr. Corangelo is mentioning. I do know that these calculate into students GPA scores. And are aligned with college board. Um I'm certainly willing to engage in a further conversation with you.
So what we will do is we'll do that and we'll recommunicate with the entire board. I'll do that in writing prior to the board meeting.
Okay, Matt.
Mrs. Becker.
Why an 86 is a B plus that's considered? Uh even if it's college and stuff. I mean, I own a school and 86 is not a B plus in our school, so.
Mrs. Becker, five minutes.
Let me just say one, before you guys go on.
One second.
Is this the grading policy that you're presently utilizing? 86 is a B plus?
Yes.
So I my suggestion would be that you guys pass this resolution, because if you try to change it now, you could adversely affect. Children's GPAs. Generally, when you make changes like this, this would be for incoming um freshman or something like that. You you've got to be very careful because you.
Don't want to change mid-year.
You would, you could actually change people's rankings and everything.
An 86, which is kind of the middle, um you know, is a plus.
Yeah, a lot of times, Mr. Mr. Corangelo, a lot of times they do this because some of the courses. You know, if you're taking AP course and you get 86, they're they're so rigorous or or honors course. And I don't know if that's the reasoning, but I was actually involved in federal litigation over a policy. Um dealing with weighting of grades and stuff, so just be very, very cautious. My suggestion is if this has been your current practice. You should maintain it, study it, and then if you're going to implement a change, you have to do it holistically. So it doesn't affect any of the current students who have been relying on this policy in the past.
I think that's an excellent point.
Mr. Jacoby, I I wasn't suggesting that we change the policy. I was just suggesting that we give, you know, provide answers before the.
Oh, okay.
Board took action.
Uh another, another option would be to pass the changes that are being recommended here. And then take a separate look at what Mr. Corangelo was mentioning and provide a comprehensive answer.
I'm not suggesting that what Mr. Corangelo is saying is incorrect. It might be very correct, but the I think what you want to probably do is just. It it make sure you have the policy in place and then you guys can study. You can always revise the policy in the future. And if you guys want to have, you know, 88 be a B plus, you can do that, but you got to look to make sure it's not going to adversely affect any of the current students.
Right, and remember again, um Mark, you're you're bringing up some very good points, but again, um. As with any policy, we would need five board members to agree to uh change it, so.
I'm just thinking I want to change it. I'm just thinking.
You would like, you would like to have the administration consider. Reconfiguration and provide you with some justification for the current grade distribution.
Uh I'm not saying I want to reconfigure. I want answers as to why the 86 is a B plus and. Because if you think about it, eh 98 to 100 it is, you know, pretty high, but an 86, you know, 76 is a. C plus, whether it's a hard class or not hard class, so now we're going to say, well, you know, an easier class, a C plus is still 76. I need, I just don't understand that. In my mind, I would say a C plus is a 79, not a 76.
So are you comfortable leaving this on the agenda for approval tonight? With the understanding that um your concerns and questions will absolutely be addressed?
Of course.
Okay, so um. I think there was another question before we vote on um. The motion for items one through six, Jeff?
Yeah, uh President Becker, thank you. Uh I just, um it's more out of curiosity, uh unusual change. Under number six, recall a board member pursuant uh 1927A. What, wh- what was the importance of removing the word regular meeting and what does that change?
So uh if I may, Mrs. Becker, on that point.
Please.
I'll respond, I'll respond to that. So Mr. Winston, um that came from um. Uh Commissioner decisions that came from the Department of Education. Um the removal of the word regular uh gives the impression that um. Uh from, that the um absence from special board meetings, for example, don't count. And that's not the case. All board meetings count for purposes of determining absence. And so the word regular gets removed. It's any board meeting.
Including, including committee and and uh committee meetings?
No, a committee meeting is not a board meeting. A board meeting is only one that has been duly advertised. And consists of a quorum of the board.
It's, yeah, it does, it doesn't include committee meetings, Jeff.
Yeah, good enough. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. So I believe um where we last slept our heroine, she was asking for um. A motion to combine items. One through six and and Joe, please remind me, do we have a motion and a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we're going to be doing a roll call vote on items one through six with the exception. Of Policy 0152 under number four. Okay, will Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Lori, you're a mute?
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. And now may I please have a motion? For revising Policy 0152. Board officers to reflect the recommendation by Mark Sizmar.
Don't move.
Moved by Mark?
Thank you.
Second by Mark. Is, is there any discussion?
They, just can you just, can you read it back exactly what did you just say in terms of?
Well, okay, so what I believe would happen now is. That if a majority of the board decide they would like to incorporate Mark's suggestion. It would then go back to the Policy Committee for exact wording. Matt, am I correct? And then it would be presented for a first reading and second reading like any policy?
Right.
Matt, you're a mute.
Actually, right now, the policy that's before you, you would need to have a motion and a second. If somebody wanted to make an amendment to it, you could do that, or if there's a motion on this policy to amend it, you could consider it that way. This policy stand, right now, the policy that you have on the agenda is the policy we voted on.
Okay, so what we're doing.
Make a motion to amend that policy and send it back to Policy Committee, you need to have a motion to amend the policy.
So we're going to go ahead and vote on the policy as is?
Or, or alternatively, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend the policy instead of back down to the Policy Committee, you could do that.
I'd like to make that motion.
Right, if I, if I may, before you can make the motion, you have to have the policy as it stands on. You know, up as a motion, so you need a first and a second on that first.
And then you can make.
Then you can obtain discussion, and then after that discussion, you can amend that the motion that's on the floor. With the precise wording that you wish to have amended.
I don't know if we're going to have the precise wording, Bernie. I mean, wouldn't.
I think you don't need to do that way. You can, you have to have a motion and a second on the floor for the current policy. If somebody wants to make an amendment to include the language that Mark Sizmar suggested and refer it back to the Policy Committee. There'd be a vote on the amendment. If that fails, then you go to the full, the original motion.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion on the policy as presented. Correct, Matt?
Correct.
Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Susanna. Second by Heather. Is there any discussion?
Lori, that was, was that Lori or Susanna?
It was me. She's confusing us tonight, Heather.
I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I, Heather's box keeps lighting up.
Sorry, um I think, I don't know if Jeff is muted or not. I'm getting a ton of feedback. It's really, really hard to follow, but I. Think he's the only one not muted, so maybe it's him.
I'm muted, I'm muted, and now I'm unmuted.
Jeff, if you can mute mute your phone, uh it keeps on popping up saying it's you.
Yeah, it's your phone, Jeff. Okay. So now, Matt, where are we?
Now there's a motion and a second on the floor, and now it's open for discussion. So somebody can make a motion to amend. The motion on the floor and refer it back to the Policy Committee based on what Mr. Sizmar had suggested about having. Statements by the various candidates.
Okay, but then what are we voting on? The the original one or the amendment?
It's just like a motion to table, Vicki. When somebody makes a motion to amend, you would then first vote on the motion to amend.
Okay.
Passes, it goes back. If it fails, then you vote on the other one.
Got it. Okay, so, Mark?
Thank you. I make a motion to amend Policy 0152 to include. A statement by the candidate, if they choose to do so, and a question and answer period for members of the board only. To ask questions of potential candidates.
And for, to be referred back to the Policy Committee, correct?
And to be, and please to be referred back to the Policy Committee for their review.
Now we need to have a second on Mr. Sizmar's motion, and once that's done, you then take a roll call on that.
Jeff seconded, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now there'll be a roll call on the amendment to the policy.
Okay, so we're now going to have a roll call vote on whether. Yes or no, this policy should be amended to reflect Mark's suggestion and be sent back to Policy. Committee for language. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
No.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
No.
Mr. Hong?
No.
Mrs. Lax?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reese?
No.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
No. Motion carries.
No, no, the motion failed.
I'm sorry, so now we're back to.
Now you go to the, now you go to the, you go back to the original motion. So you need to have a roll call on the original motion to adopt the policy as presented in the agenda this evening.
Right, what he said. Okay.
Good motion and second, it's.
Right, so Jeff, please call the roll. Uh Joe?
Joe.
No problem. Mr. Corangelo?
No.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
No.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
No.
President Baker?
Becker, say. You called me the wrong name. I call you the wrong name.
It's one of those nights, man. Yes. Now can I say motion carries?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you all for that discussion. Okay. Now, where are we? Is it still, is it still Thursday? Okay, yes. We are up to curriculum. We have one item on tonight's curriculum agenda. Can I please have a motion for that?
No move.
Moved by Lori. Second by Susanna. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carries. The item on our facility agenda has been tabled to the next board meeting. That brings us up to finance. This financial services. Can I please have a motion to combine items one through four?
No move.
Moved by Lori?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call, though. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
He dropped off the phone.
I think he left, okay?
Um.
Yeah, he's no longer here.
Okay, I know he keeps going in and out to try and get the connection.
If he rejoins President Becker, he can then just recall, record his vote on this one.
Mr. Winston indicated he was going to be leaving the meeting early.
Okay.
Okay, uh President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our human resources agenda tonight. Can I please have a motion for that item?
No move.
Moved by Lori. Anybody?
Second.
Second by Mark Two. Is there any discussion? Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. On our student services agenda, we have three items tonight. I'd like to combine items one and three. Can I please have a motion for that?
No move.
Moved by Lori, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwos?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. We have one item on our transportation agenda. Can I please have a motion for that item?
No move.
Moved by Lori?
Second.
Hold on, hold on. Sorry, just let me catch up. Yeah, you're okay.
Okay, second by, second by Mark Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Committee reports information items in the good or the cause of the board. I believe our student representative Lou, you said, was going to be with us tonight. Tony?
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing very well, President Becker. I hope everyone is doing well as well.
Did you have a a good spring break and holiday?
Yes, yes, I did. Uh I actually was able to go and visit my sister. Uh who's in Cleveland right now, uh and she's at med school, so I was able to get that done in spring break and then come back quarantined. And then come back to school, so.
Oh, great. Visi- visiting family is always um wonderful.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you got for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's probably the most exciting time to be a student right now. I think. As the student, uh the student experience has been throughout the year consistently rising, but this week there's been a spike and. It's not just because of the five-day schedule and you get to see your peers and uh socialize in the hallways with people that you haven't seen in over a. and socialize in the hallways with people that you haven't seen in over a year. But it's also because of excitement for some events that are on the horizon. And I think some of the students who kind of treated this week as an experiment to see whether they were willing to come on and wake up every morning for the next few weeks and the remainder of the quarter, I think that they had an overwhelmingly positive experience. So the retention on the people who signed up to be in person, I think, should be pretty good. So, and this is just a testament to, you know, the diligent effort put in by the staff and the teachers and everyone that made this possible. So that way the students can have this nice, normal, or at least slightly normal, experience. It's an especially exciting time for seniors as we are kind of cementing our decisions as to where we're going next year. And I have a little, quick little update for you guys, but I'll be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign to study computer engineering. So I know you guys have been tracking my progress and I just wanted to share that with you.
Wonderful news, congratulations.
Thank you, President Becker. I'm excited. And all of the students that know where they're going are excited, especially to show off their new school pride on the senior decision day, which will be May third. So that's another thing for seniors to look forward to. And then we have another series of events coming up. One of them is that the National Honor Society is hosting a combo drive this Saturday where students and staff can drop off either donations of diapers, baby wipes, and formula for the Central Jersey Diaper Bank, and any various snacks and bottles of water for Elijah's Promise. And also next month, in mid-May to, or early May to mid-May, if you remember last year, we had the Mc Foods Battle of the Classes Food Drive, which was, I think, like, one of the first few big events, or at least community gatherings that we had in quarantine, where we received, I think, over 25,000 pounds of food. So we're doing it again this year in mid-May. And hopefully it's even better than, you know, the exceptional result that we got last year. And that, like I said, that's happening in mid-May. So I just wanted to plug those two events as, you know, good events that really can bring the community together. And I also, a lot of other people have shouted out, but the fact that athletics is continuing and not only just continuing, but succeeding, like the gymnastics team and the girls volleyball team. So, you know, it's a great time to be a student. It's an exciting time to be a student. And I'm just, like I said, giant spike in the happiness and I'm just happy to be a part of the ride.
Thank you. That was such a nice uplifting upbeat report. Greatly appreciate it. Hope the rest of senior year continues to be a positive.
Thank you.
Any information items for the good or the cause of the board? Lori, I think you had your hand up?
I did, although I hate following Tony because it was so exciting. On a not as happy note, I did notice that Ruth Chang is retiring. And we always lose good people to retirement when it's their time. And this is another one of those where it's going to be especially big shoes to fill. She has done so much for our world language program. She is one of the most passionate, dynamic people I have ever met. And I'm a little heartbroken right now. I'm thrilled for her and her family. But I just wanted to say, I hope we can get her back in, virtually in here at some point before she goes. But what a loss for the district, what an incredible, incredible woman. And she's done so much, so, thank you, Ruth.
Susanna, did you have your hand up?
Yes, and just to echo what, you know, Ms. Lax just mentioned, I don't know, there's anybody with more energy and enthusiasm for her position and her role. So we are going to miss her dearly. She's brought forward, you know, so many, so many new ideas and new programs to us and certainly wish her well in retirement. So I was very sad to see that in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting. I also just wanted to mention Human Relations Council held on April twentieth, a Facebook Live event, which is available now in the recording, an event called Building Bridges, Combating Anti-Asian Racism. And we had a wonderful panel who shared their expertise with us. And we also had wonderful representation from our students from EDHS, including the Asian Club and others. And I encourage you to watch it. And especially, you know, when you hear the voice of the youth and it really gives us, you know, gives us reason for optimism. So, you know, just want to thank the kids and all the panelists and the participants in the event that night.
I also want to piggyback on what Lori and Susanna just said about Ruth. Ruth is the kind of person who walks into a room and literally lights up the room. Her passion is unequaled. It's impossible to be around her and not become passionate about, well, everything having to do with school, but especially languages. Ruth, I wish I remembered enough of my high school and college French to be able to say what I want to say to you in French. But the only word that comes to mind is adieu?
Merci beaucoup. Say that one.
Yeah, merci beaucoup. And one illustration of Ruth and her personality and how she motivates people. When the first time she came to the curriculum meeting to talk about the addition of Mandarin to the foreign language curriculum, she literally came with a bag of the little cutie Mandarin oranges. And as she talked about this exciting class she wanted to introduce, she walked around the room giving us all the Mandarins. I know it sounds, it may lose something in the translation, but that's Ruth. Whether it's giving out Mandarins or figuring out ways to engage kids. We all are sorry to see her go, but we wish her luck. Every year, we bid goodbye to veterans in our district who add so much, who bring so much to what is the character of our district. And they all deserve our gratitude. Anyone else? Any other information items? Seeing now we do have a need for closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which a public meeting of the boards shall reconvene and action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Lori.
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Good night, stay safe. Thanks for joining us. Board members, please log out and log into closed session.
Thanks, Tony. Congratulations, Tony.